Afternoon. We are very fortunate to have all of you here and it's actually very exciting because of the speakers Amy and Rajul is actually our new steering committee members by joining today, so very welcome to them. I'm gonna hand over to Rajul, but we'll do the proper introduction. Thank you so much.
Hi, am I audible?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Welcome everyone to the educational session. Thank you first of all for joining this session and I'm hope everybody is excited for the first educational session hosted by the Nutrition Network. My name is Rajul Ghalah and I'm working as a senior clinical dietitian at Tata Memorial Hospital in the Department of Pediatric Oncology. And I'm excited to welcome Amy and Rachel. Dr. Amy is currently working as a senior lecturer in the Department of Nutrition and she's completed her PhD in nutrition. And Dr. Rachel has completed her PhD nine years ago and she currently is working as a senior lecturer in nutrition. So welcome both of you and congratulations for being the steering group members. Over to the speakers now, Amy and Rachel.
Thanks Rajul and yeah, very excited to be the newest members in the Nutrition Network with Raquel. Raquel, are you gonna share your screen? Are you happy to do that? And I'll hand it over to you.
Yes, I will. Yes, I'd just like to say thank you as well. I'm really looking forward to working with you. I've worked before with Amy and it's great actually. Right, so I'm going to share the screen. This is a little slow. Can you all see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, perfect, okay.
Raquel, you've got the presenter view showing if you've got two screens going.
Yes.
We can see your presenter view. Just share the other screen if that's okay.
This is doing it automatically because I've got three screens here. Are you happy?
It's not bothering us. You can go on.
Brilliant, thank you. Well, first of all, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to to present our recent article. The evolution of nutritional care in children and young people with acute lymphoblastic leukaemia, narrative review. And this is obviously the work of a team, not just Amy and myself, so I'd just like to acknowledge them before I start. And then just a brief description of what we are going to do. I'm going to start with the presentation to talk to provide an introduction about acute lymphoblastic leukaemia and then talk about the evidence that is currently out there at the moment on nutritional status and dietary intake. And then I'll let Amy to continue after that to talk about dietary interventions and the goals of nutritional support. So just with a brief introduction, pediatric cancer includes many conditions. They are classified according to the International Classification of Childhood Cancer. This is mainly for research purposes. There are 12 main diagnoses and 47 subgroups. For nutrition purposes, many of the articles stratify this into hematological malignancies, solid tumors, brain tumor, and other associated diagnosis. Although the focus of this is on acute lymphoblastic leukaemia, I'd just like to acknowledge that a lot of the research presents heterogeneous diagnosis or group the actual articles into hematological malignancies. So we include some of the articles that we thought are relevant for this for this presentation and the article. So acute lymphoblastic leukaemia, this is in brief originates in the bone marrow. This is due to an increased and uncontrolled synthesis of white blood cells that are then released into the bloodstream. As a result of that, there is an increase of immature white blood cells in the blood with a reduction of platelets and red blood cells. That together leads to a shortness of breath, bleeding, and being more vulnerable to infections. This requires immediate treatment for survival. In terms of the epidemiology, worldwide, and this includes all ages, the incident rate which is at the top is highest in Canada, in Europe, parts of Central America, Asia, and also Oceania. But if we look at the bottom worldwide map in terms of the death rates, we can see here that the the highest death rates are in Central America, parts of South America, Eastern European countries, parts of Africa, and also parts of Asia and Oceania. Now, if we then look at the the incident rates and the death rates stratified by by income countries and by age groups, the blue one is children and young people under the age of 24. We can see at the top that the incident cases overall have increased worldwide. However, the the death rates have increased in low, medium income countries and low income countries. But this had decreased in high income countries and also in medium income countries as well. The overall in high income countries survival rate is over 90%, which has significantly increased in the last 40 years. So in terms of treatment, as I mentioned, treatment is required for survival. Generally, we tend to use a treatment and clinical trials. For this, it lasts for a long period of time, which is between two and three years. Treatment has different phases, which includes induction, consolidation, internal maintenance, intensification, and then a long period of maintenance. There are factors that determine the intensity of treatment regime, which might be low, medium, and high. And these factors are minimal residual disease, which is the amount of leukemic cells that are are left. But there are other factors such as age, sex, genomic measures, and also immunophenotyping. So that treatment plus other factors lead to the etiology of malnutrition. The etiology of malnutrition, and I'm aware this slide is very busy, is very complex and multifactorial. So if we look at this slide here, we have first of all iatrogenic factors, which are as a result of the actual treatment. And we can see here there is a range of symptoms such as mucusitis, serumstomia, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, constipation, changes in appetite, taste, smell, increase of cravings, and also infections. Now, in terms of the drugs, I'd just like to highlight three of them that really tend to cause a group of of side effects that either lead to undernutrition or overnutrition for different factors. So we have, on the one hand, immunotherapy that may lead to an increased risk of infection that may lead to undernutrition. And we also have macronutrient disruption, which in the acute and longer median term may lead to changes in body composition. So that may be a decrease in muscle mass with an increase in fat mass, but particularly ectopic fat distribution that may lead to obesity. And I put a question mark in here, anabolic resistance, which it is a decrease or inability of synthesizing new protein for muscle mass. And this can be acute, but perhaps also long term as well. We also have other types of side effects that might, for example, pancreatitis that might lead to induced diabetes, but also peripheral neuropathy leading to constipation. And really important as well, mucusitis, and that might lead to malabsorption as well. So there are of course other other factors which are classified into function that may, an example of this is pain, fatigue, or motor function as well. But there is a systemic inflammation. This has a lot of question marks because there is not a lot of research done in children, but there is more in adults. And an example is resting energy expenditure, anabolic resistance, or centrally mediated anorexia. And then we mustn't forget the psychosocioeconomic factors that have implications either on undernutrition or overnutrition. So an example of this is anxiety, depression, the low hospital stay, or geographical location where it might be very difficult to access a hospital or pure supermarkets where they have healthy foods available, or any other foods. Overall, moving into nutritional status, the way we assess this is by carrying out a comprehensive assessment that includes anthropometry and body composition, also biochemical parameters. So this is an example of this is micronutrient status which I will focus on, but also clinical and a dietary assessment. And it is not in the in this definition, but we also have environmental factors that that must be assessed as well for nutritional status. As you can see, there is no a single gold standard measure to assess this. This is why we do this comprehensive assessment. Now, in simple terms, we could, we can define this as what children are, what children eat, and then what children can do. For the purpose of this presentation, we're going to focus on what children are and what children eat. So the first thing is what children are. So I'm going to talk about studies that report data on this. So there was back in 2012, there was systematic review focused on high income countries that reported the prevalence of undernutrition in leukaemia. They found that this was lower than expected, between 0 and 10%. However, they raised concerns in terms of the quality of the studies, the criteria that was used to assess this, and the actual methods that were used to to again assess this as well. Back in 2015, there was another article again focused on high income countries and all childhood diagnosis, looking at prevalence of undernutrition. They stratify this by type of measurement. And if we look at this graph, we can see on the left-hand side that we have body mass and weight for height. And then on the right-hand side are anthropometry. There is clear differences in here. And as we can see, if we look at this by BMI and different stages of treatment, it looks like undernutrition increases over time. However, if we look at midaparameter circumference and trisepiskin fold thickness, we can see that this is a higher diagnosis during treatment, but it reduces afterwards to 90% at the end of treatment. So there is clear discrepancies here depending on the type of measurement that we are using. This systematic review also looked at overnutrition. In this case, it was defined by BMI. And then it was categorized by different stages of treatment as well. So if we look at the hematological malignancy group, we can see that overall there is a significant increase from the time of diagnosis during treatment and end of treatment that goes from 50% to up to 40%, and this is the the median. Now, the question is, does this continue into adulthood? And the research are there, they say does continue five, 10, and 25 years into survivability. But then what happens when we are actually looking more at the body composition? Is there any changes that occur in here apart from the pure anthropometry? So this graph on the left-hand side shows fat-free mass percentage measured by by electrical impedance and anthropometry, including midaparameter circumference and trisepiskin fold thickness, and then an estimation of fat-free mass using calculations. And on the right-hand side is fat mass percentage, again using BIA and anthropometry. There is a clear pattern here that we can see. Fat-free mass reduces over time and never cuts out. Whilst a fat mass percentage, you can see that increases over time and never goes down to how it was before. Again, that's abnormal body composition continuing to adulthood in survivors of childhood ALL. And this is an article that was published recently. They used a DEXA scan to to assess body composition. And clearly, again, we can see how the muscle mass is lower than than the than zero, so lower than normal, whilst we have either a normal fat mass or excess fat mass in most of the population. So here it was raised that there was abnormal body composition with high fat mass and low fat mass, raising the issue of increased risk of early sarcopenia and early sarcopenic obesity. We must be cautious with with both terms because for the definition of this, we need to assess also muscle function, which is not being done in these in these articles. Nevertheless, it's really important that we are starting to see a pattern here. But then, why is obesity important? Is this a protector of treatment-related toxicities? We can see, we can see in here that if we look at the obese category and the underweight category, we can see how both groups have much higher treatment-related toxicities than the healthy weight or the overweight. And then in this article, they looked at the specific treatment complications. And it is the incidence rate ratio, the different ones in here, it's really nicely presented. Where we have obese children have more abdominal complications, more bleeding, hyperlipidemia, kidney dysfunction, liver dysfunction, and also suspected unexpected serious adverse reactions. So then we can see in this graph how everything is compared to healthy weight, underweight, the overweight, and the obese. Once more, it is highlighted here how the incidence rate ratio is much higher for several complications than it is for overweight, healthy weight, or even underweight. So just to summarize that, we can see that obesity from the evidence that has been presented that increases the risk of complications. So it is an important fact to take into consideration. If we move on to micronutrients, so micronutrients are involved in antioxidant, hematologic systems, and organ function. Clinical signs of micronutrient deficiencies in children who are treated can often be masked by the treatment side effects, and they are very difficult to identify purely by by symptoms. But also, we have, it's the other way around, but the deficiencies can also lead to more toxicity. And importantly, micronutrient abnormalities can be masked by the patient's phenotypic nutritional status. Normal weight, overweight, might be that they also have micronutrient deficiencies or excess. In terms of the specific micronutrients, we start with vitamin D status. There is more research done in this area where vitamin D deficiency or insufficiency is at 50% in high-income countries, but this is reflected partly of the general population. But what we've seen is that if this is left untreated, it really increases during during treatment. And this is more common in older children and those with higher pigmentation and overweight and obese. So factors contributing to vitamin D deficiency has been shown to be no taking vitamin D supplementation, reduced sun exposure, malabsorption, and also altered metabolism. So what we what we've seen from the research out there is that the vitamin D recommendations for the general population, 10 micrograms of 400 international units, does not meet their needs, the children with ALL needs. And some observational data shows that supplementation of 600 or more international units per day seem to reach the optimal levels of 75 or more. But what happens with the other micronutrients? So we know that patients with cancer exhibit high prevalence of micronutrient abnormalities from the time of diagnosis and throughout treatment. So we have at the top vitamin A, and we can see that excess vitamin A is is high and it increases throughout treatment. However, we also have other micronutrient deficiencies such as copper and zinc, which is high across for a period of time on 18 months. And also, research shows that deficiencies tend to be more prevalent in healthy weight and overweight obese in patients not just with acute lymphoblastic leukaemia with also heterogeneous diagnosis. But overweight and obese patients are more likely to have deficiencies during treatment than those who are underweight or those who are healthy weight. And the deficiencies are magnesium, selenium, copper, B12, and folate. However, these tend to have excess, and this is generally vitamin A, but also vitamin E. It's been shown in some some of the research. But it's important to note as well that undernourished are more likely to be deficient on some micronutrients, so selenium, B12, and also vitamin A. And also important to note that children and young people receiving a combination of nutritional support plus micronutrient supplementation tend to have micronutrient status within the normal range. So are these micronutrients protectors of clinical outcome? Clinical outcome measured as event-free survival or event. So we can see from this graph that when these, at the top, when these micronutrients are looked separately, but individually, we have copper that may contribute, a copper, a higher copper status rather than low copper status that might contribute to clinical outcomes, whilst low selenium and zinc might contribute to higher clinical outcomes in terms of event, in terms of event per se. But when this was looked all together with other variables, it was only selenium, low selenium intake that contributed to event. Might say it's important to to raise here the ratio, which is 0.02, which is 2%. Although there is a significance here, it is it is 2% with a clinical significance. So in terms of micronutrients, whether there is an association with number of complications, we can see here that some micronutrients that are low lead to more complications, while other micronutrients that are high lead to more complications. And this is at different stages of of treatment. So I highlighted here in orange, the ones that high lead to higher number of complications, but the red ones, lower levels lead to higher number of complications. And again, we can highlight vitamin A, vitamin E, and then the micronutrients, selenium, magnesium, and copper. This is a large study, a really nice study that actually they carried out in India. And what they found was that selenium deficiency really affected outcome in children with cancer. But this was, we can see on the right-hand side, this was particularly the case for hematological malignancies. So what does this mean? What can we do? And should we be supplementing? So in terms of vitamin D, unfortunately, we don't have a specifically designed vitamin D supplementation guidelines, and this is due to the lack of intervention studies. It looks like a dosage of 600 international units per day might lead to optimal levels. But for the other micronutrients, unfortunately, we don't really know what optimal dosages are. And we also don't know how much we need to take that will lead to the optimal dosages as well. So more research needs to be done in this area. And in terms of antioxidants and other nutrients, we have the same situation as well. We should not give above the recommended upper limit purely because this is not part of routine practice. It's part of complementary and alternative therapy, and we don't have evidence for that at the moment. And the same happens with omega-3 fatty acids. So that takes me to what children are eating. Again, evidence describing nutrient intakes in these populations scars and inconsistency. Inconsistent, however, there is consistency in some aspects that we have here. And this is in children that are receiving standard and low-risk protocols. So we have on the left-hand side, diet quality. We're starting to see a pattern here that is emerging. So we have children that are having diets that are low quality, high energy, and low micronutrient. They are not meeting the recommended guidelines. And we are having also some behavior aspects that are developing from here, whether it's permissive parenting of food cravings and learned food aversions that start at the time of treatment and then continue afterwards. In terms of the micronutrient intakes, we know that we're exceeding recommendations for vitamin A and vitamin E. However, they fall short of recommendations for B12, folate, vitamin D, calcium, magnesium, selenium, zinc, copper, and then other nutrients such as omega-3 fatty acids. And that diet-based antioxidant intake has been associated with a lower infection rate and mucusitis after induction. So maybe that at the moment, what we have, which is following the recommended levels might lead to a reduction in complications, but again, we need more evidence for this. So it is clear at the moment, there is a pattern that is emerging, that diet quality is reflected on a status at the moment in this population. And I'm just going to finish with this and let Amy continue her presentation.
Thanks Raquel, and really good setting the scene for me. So I am going to focus mainly on the dietary interventions that we scoped when we were doing this review and particularly hone in on the different parts in the treatment pathway where we can sort of start to think about designing future nutrition interventions as well. So we're all very well aware that access to to nutrition care across the entire treatment continuum is an essential component of treatment for our children and young people with cancer and specifically focusing on Um and specifically focusing on our children and young people with A L L. We know that this care needs to be provided by a nutrition professional that has experience in pediatric cancer. And all of the complexities associated with the diagnosis and treatment um and nutrition impact symptoms associated with treatment. Um but we do know from surveys uh completed by one of our co-authors, Louise Henry over in the UK. And here in little old New Zealand, um we have found that consistently across the world. We have uh and and not enough uh workforce, not enough um allocation of staffing. To this particular area of clinical care. Um and we have a lack of clinical guidelines to follow to try and standardize care for these children. In twenty twenty one, we had a consensus document come out from the an Italian group of oncology professionals. Um and these had a series of sort of recommendations or consensus statements around um how we manage nutrition. In children with cancer and specifically these statements where we looked at them relating to um their relevance for children with A L L. Um it included focusing on overweight and obesity at diagnosis and during treatment. And as Raquel mentioned, that increased risk of sarcopenic obesity um into survivorship and what that means for our children going forward in life. Next slide. Thank you. So when we think about nutrition interventions, there are several things that we need to consider um in our population of children and young people. Um not just with A L L, but also with with pediatric cancers across the spectrum. So obviously um we need to maintain growth and development during treatment. A lot of our children are diagnosed very young and during very important growing periods in their lives. Um and nutrition is really quite essential to maintaining that growth as they go through their treatments. We really did start to see that maybe this high energy, high protein approach, sort of blanket approach. That historically has been used in pediatric cancer may actually not be appropriate for our children and young people. Particularly with our standard risk or low risk protocols as well. And that's because of this uh increasing prevalence of overweight and obesity in this group of children. And we know that our children with standard risk A L L are often less likely to require nutrition support. Such as enteral nutrition or nasogastric feeding. Um and really, there is really a shift towards focusing on obesity prevention in this population. Um particularly, especially those that we see with overweight and obesity at diagnosis. And as Raquel pointed out, with those anthropometric measurements that increase in um Z scores of B M I. Uh across that treatment continuum and that increase in percent fat mass across the treatment continuum as well. Diet quality, as Raquel said, is very important and we've seen this um uh ongoing um sort of trademark. Um intakes of of children particularly going through um sort of standard risk protocol treatment. And that is that high energy, low fruits and veggies um and sort of non uh health behaviors. That might not be conducive to being health promoting um when we're thinking about longevity and reducing risk of chronic disease and survivorship. Next slide. We all know that treatment for A L L is really long and it spans up to three years of a child's life. And for children that are diagnosed really young, um this treatment and its side effects can cause quite significant disruptions. To feeding and eating development um that occurs during this time as well. And this can impact things like eating eating behaviors, um our food choices and our food acceptance in our children and young people with A L L. So we know with this uh in mind, that we should try and sort of start to design interventions that begin early. To mitigate some of those physical and psychosocial morbidities that are associated with treatment that Raquel highlighted earlier. Um and we should have some flexibility in our nutrition interventions as we go through that treatment continuum. Based on the sort of fluctuations in a child's needs. When we looked at the literature, we saw that most of our nutrition interventions uh were focused during maintenance therapy and continued into survivorship. Um and particularly um mainly really the rationale being that there, this is the time when treatment is of a reduced or low intensity. Um and um we probably could focus on on something other than treatment during this period. Um and so we have the most research attention in this space. And also, we have in terms of the types of interventions, it's really around the development of obesity after treatment. That has received the majority of our research attention thus far. Next slide please. So we've we we all are aware of this tiered approach to nutrition interventions that we've long recommended. Um and we do try and tailor our um nutrition interventions according to risk stratification and known nutritional risks. So taking the observational data that we have in these populations um and sort of thinking about the types of um. Uh side effects that or nutrition impact symptoms that our children experience. We have our standard risk children where we really have a goal of maintaining weight and weight trajectories through treatment. So sort of continuing on that weight trajectory and not going above um whichever weight trajectory that child is on. And make really mitigating and managing that onset of overweight and obesity. There are still children that we're going to have to worry about um preventing protein energy malnutrition as well during treatment. So we've got, we sort of came up with this uh not not by any means something we've invented. But when we look across the sort of practice across the years, um when we have children that have no evidence of weight loss or malnutrition at diagnosis. Really focusing on healthy eating according to the dietary guidelines for healthy children seems to be the better way to approach things. Um particularly as we go through those challenging periods of induction where things like glucocorticosteroids are impacting our eating behaviors. Uh and food choices there. And really that preservation of muscle mass and bone mineral density is really key in these children. If we have difficulties in maintaining our baseline weight Z scores, then we can look to things like food fortification or oral nutrition supplements. But we really do know from practice that oral nutrition supplements are very rarely accepted for long periods of time. Um often due to just taste fatigue um and uh uh just a lack of acceptance. Um of having to have these multiple times a day in our children. Where we have evidence of treatment-related malnutrition, we look to things like scaling up with oral nutrition support. Or really starting to evaluate whether enteral nutrition such as nasogastric feeding is necessary. And it's so important that this happens before we see a decline in nutrition status. And this is a very frustrating area of practice um for a lot of us as well. We do see some children respond poorly to treatment and we have um sort of gastrointestinal compromise in these children. That may necessitate the need for um enteral nutrition or even parenteral nutrition over time. Next slide please. For our high-risk children, we know that um they are more likely to experience weight loss and increased risk of malnutrition. Just associated with the intensity of their treatment. Um and so in our children that have difficulty maintaining those baseline weight Z scores, food fortification is always the first approach. Um and tailoring that to the severity of symptoms is important, plus minus introducing that oral nutrition support as well. If we have children that are experiencing treatment-related malnutrition escalating to enteral nutrition is um pretty key. Again, before we see that decline in nutrition status. Um and here we have children uh more likely to experience significant gastrointestinal compromise. So parental nutrition may be needed for periods or we may need to focus on delivering most of our nutrition through enteral nutrition. Next slide please. Sorry.
Sorry.
No worries. And finally, when we look at survivorship, um it really is focusing on whether or not there's evidence of treatment-induced overweight and obesity. In our children and young people. So this is where we really need to focus on optimizing our dietary intake through optimizing macro and micronutrient intakes. Um and focusing on nutrient density in these children. Focusing on healthy eating according to our country-specific dietary guidelines is pretty um pretty effective. Uh we I we are very aware that a lot of our children don't actually eat according to our dietary guidelines. Regardless of having a childhood cancer diagnosis or not, but this is generally the goal that we want to achieve in children. Um particularly as they are sort of returning back to normal activity like school and sports etcetera. Next slides. We really didn't have many words uh in our word count to try and explore some exciting areas in nutrition research. Um but we did pay a little bit of attention to the microbiome. So this is an increasing area of of research interest and we do have some recent data to suggest that there are. Um relationships or associations between dysbiosis and things like toxicities and infectious complications. Um and and immune dysregulation etcetera. And these sort of things then have a knock-on effect on things like overall survival or event-free survival in our children and young people. Um we don't really know if these changes or this dysbiosis persists into survivorship and um later in life. Um and whether or not this predisposes our children and young people to the risk of chronic disease in survivorship as well. So this sort of posits the question as to whether or not we can modulate the 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 microbiome in our children as they're going through treatment. By targeting um our interventions to include things like pro or prebiotics or even symbiotics as well. To support that microbial stability. But we don't have any safety or efficacy trials pres- at present in young or in pediatrics. I know there's a little bit of data coming out in adults, um so we can't really make any recommendations at this stage. Especially recommendations that might change our our practice in um in hospitals. One of the things we do know that our children aren't having enough of is dietary fiber associated with poor intakes of fruits and vegetables and whole grains as well. So this could be a dietary strategy that we focus on in the meantime to try and optimize fiber intakes in our children. We do know that dietary fiber confers a really big host of um he- health benefits. Um and stimulates the growth of that healthy bacteria um in our gut. Um we do know that our children don't meet dietary fiber recommendations regardless of whether or not they have a cancer diagnosis. Um so it is another challenge um in this uh population of patients as well. Um we do need further research in this space, so whether that's ongoing observational studies. To try and understand the changes that occur in the gut microbiota as we go through treatment. Um and then following that, trying to design uh well-designed randomized controlled trials to look at what probiotics are optimal. Um what dose is optimal um and whether or not we can use dietary fiber through um say oral nutrition support supplements. Um to modulate our gut bacteria in this setting. Next slide please. And this just harks back to Raquel's um discussions around vitamin D. We know that bone mineral density is really extensively reported as being impacted particularly in our children with an A L L diagnosis. Um we know that there is an influence of the diagnosis or the disease itself, um but also the treatment of of our children. So these are pretty much non-modifiable risk factors for um impacts to bone mineral density. But we do know poor dietary intakes, particularly of um micronutrients like calcium um and vitamin D deficiency. Uh impact um bone mineral density and that really gives our kids a a six-fold increase in the risk of fragility fractures. Um associated with this poor density. We don't have enough resource or enough evidence to say that every child that goes through A L L treatment. Needs to have their bone mineral density surveyed over time. Um and we don't even have enough evidence to say maybe even those children that are treated with high doses of steroids. Should receive bone mineral density monitoring. We do know that low vitamin D increases the risk of poor density in our children. And with high amounts of vitamin D deficiency in our children at diagnosis and then through treatment, um this is exacerbating the problem. So this harks back to Raquel's discussions around vitamin D supplementation. Um and just that generalized supplementation in children that don't have a deficiency. Um and then a slightly higher supplementation to try and preserve um some bone mineral density as we go through treatment. Next slide please. Um our eating behaviors are significantly impacted as we go through treatment. And because our children are diagnosed, often diagnosed or mostly diagnosed as really young, so under five years of age. We know that um this has significant impact on their eating and feeding behaviors. Um most of our families, when we talk to them in survivorship, report a a lack of understanding. As to the sort of nutrition-related ramifications of treatment in their children. Um and the relationship between uh what is eaten during treatment and potential chronic disease development later in survivorship. Our children will experience at least one nutrition issue following treatment. Um this is things like low diet quality, um and that's where that any calorie is a good calorie is not necessarily the best advice. Um for our children as they go through treatment. Um we have energy-dense and nutrient-poor dietary intakes, um low intakes of fruits and veggies. And maladaptive parenting strategies that can occur during treatment as well. When we compare our children going through treatment to their healthy peers, those who had treatment for A L L. Um had poor diet quality due to selective eating, so fussy eating, um with low food acceptance and poor self-regulation. Um and survivorship. And so these are also things, these eating behaviors are also things that we need to consider when we are designing nutrition interventions. Next slide please. So what are these nutrition interventions, I hear you ask? So we have most of our evidence from um the maintenance phase of treatment when treatment intensity is a lot lower in our children. Um and when we look at um the last sort of five to ten years, this is where most of our research attention has been. We've had pilot and feasibility studies that um have shown us that we can achieve uh even energy deficits. Or reduce glycemic load or improve intakes of certain nutrients um over time. And I will um dive deeper into these, a couple of these particular pieces of research um in the next few slides. So we know that in survivorship, our nutrition interventions should be tailored to enhancing dietary quality. Through focusing on things like eating behaviors and increasing uh intakes of fruits and veggies and whole grains to improve our health outcomes. Um but we do know that our dieticians and um nutritionists are often not part, a regular part of survivorship or maintenance care. For our children, um that harks back to and it just a a lack of appropriate um staffing across a lot of our centers. In high-income countries. Um but we do, as nutrition professionals, have the ability to facilitate obesity prevention strategies. As well as other important dietary considerations that are there to optimize health during survival. So we really do need to try and figure out what that optimal level of staffing is to try and um best meet the needs of our children. Next slide please. Early in treatment, which is really exciting, um so early meaning within the first sort of um induction phase of of treatment. And probably slightly into consolidation as well. So um these early interventions have been designed to try and prevent the progression of overweight and obesity. Um and also look at improving diet quality as well as being those feasibility studies that we mentioned. So we've got mainly studies in the U S, we've got U S, Canada um and um. I think that's all, yeah, U S, Canada and Canada, where the majority of our research has come out of. Um in regards to early phases of of nutrition interventions during treatment. Um and what we've seen is it's it's mixed. Um and there are not really huge numbers of children included in these studies. Um so there is a need for replication across the world of these studies, so collaboration, so we can combine data. Um and um and and sort of bigger numbers in different centers as well. So these studies range from four weeks to twelve months of duration with varying frequency of nutrition interventions. Um and they all began during induction therapy, which is really interesting. Um is often seen as a really hectic time where families might not have the capacity to take on additional information like nutrition information. But our families demonstrate enormous capacity to take on information and and make changes. So this is a really exciting area to try and focus on. Um if we go to the next slide, I'll just focus on two uh studies that occurred during induction. So this was one um by Walters and colleagues in the U S. Um and they enrolled patients within three days of starting induction therapy. Their nutrition counselling was focused on a low G I dietary intake and they had weekly sessions with a dietitian for three months. And then a further monthly session with a dietitian in the next three months. They chose a low glycemic diet because there is data to support its efficacy and weight management um in adult and in pediatric settings as well. So the educational sessions included counselling participants on increasing their dietary fiber with low G I vegetables. Reducing intakes of simple sugars and emphasizing high protein foods. Next slide please. So they had um, oh yeah, clicked twice, that's bad Raquel, yeah, thank you. Animating things when you're not in control is probably not sensible. Um there are twenty eight participants enrolled in this study and twenty three participants had their data analyzed. And so they observed a statistically significant increase in total energy intake at the end of induction. Um and this stabilized by month six. But by the end of induction, when you delve down into that sort of what the macronutrient distribution was like. There was a significant reduction in total carbohydrate intake um by uh which remained stable by month six. And an increase in total protein intake at the end of induction and at the end of month six as well. We saw decreases, uh significant decreases at each time point and uh. We saw decreases, uh significant decreases at each time point in uh added sugar intake and dietary fiber increased, um although this was just a trend at this stage. We didn't see any change or significant decrease in median GI, but we did have a reduction in energy-adjusted glycemic load at the end of induction. There was no difference in BMI Z score over the first six months of treatment, which means that it didn't actually change. So we didn't see an increase in BMI Z score in these children on this intervention, which is really important to note. Um, it was feasible, seventy, over seventy percent of patients uh reduced their GI load. Sixty, over sixty percent of patients increased their dietary fiber and decreased their total sugar intake. So overall, this six-month nutrition intervention that was initiated during induction was feasible to prevent uh and may be a really good tool to prevent weight gain. Um, necessitating a large-scale uh study now. Next slide please. And the other one is a controversial um notion in that we're looking at calorie and nutrient restriction to augment chemo response or chemosensitivity in children with ALL. So this um is in high-risk diagnoses. Um, they were enrolled um at diag- uh sorry, at diagnosis. Um, and uh they were between ages of ten to twenty-one. So this was the ideal intervention and this was main premise was to induce at at least twenty percent um caloric deficit. Um, and that was divided between a deficit created by food intake or um a caloric intake, um mainly fat intake and glycemic load and also a a deficit created by energy expenditure through physical activity. So this intervention began before day four of induction, so again really early. And it included individualized diet and exercise choices, inclusion of the family in education and weekly motivation and reinforcement. Next slide please. Um, in terms of the outcomes for the study, they had forty patients enrolled in ideal. They did compare them to eighty historical controls as well, but I'll just talk to these forty. Um, we didn't see a reduction in fat mass across the whole group, but when we stratified them by overweight and obese, we saw that there was a significant decrease in percent fat mass at the end of the induction period. When they accounted for prognostic factors, the ideal intervention significantly reduced MRD risk as well, which was a really important finding. So the authors concluded that in integrating caloric restriction into the induction phase for ALL treatment in high-risk children was feasible, reduces fat gain in those that are overweight and obese at diagnosis and improves disease response. They also measured measured some biochemical factors such as um adiponectin um and I think leptin over time as well. Um, and they looked at um adiponectin because it is involved in regulating glucose levels, our lipid metabolism and our insulin sensitivity. So um they saw increased adiponectin and decreased insulin resistance in this group as well, which requires um delving into deeper over uh through um larger-scale studies as well and replication of the study across the world. Uh, next slide please. This is really just an acknowledgement of the fact that there aren't that many sort of um summaries um uh that look at at single diagnoses. We just, we're so aware of our limitations being the heterogeneity in our populations. Um, and we do have um uh inconsistencies in the types of measurements that we are taking um over time as well. So that makes it difficult to compare between our um our different publications, particularly in childhood cancer. Um, next slide please. We looked at uh the the sort of change in in treatment, the change in nutrition impact um and interventions and then the nutrition research over time. So from the late nineteen forty's right through to today. And you can see really pleasingly that we've got this real burst in availability of nutrition data um just due to like-minded nutrition uh professionals like us collecting data and publishing on it um uh to try and understand the role of nutrition in improving outcomes for our children and young people uh with cancer and also children and young people with ALL. So in the then the twenty-twenty's, we have um newer trials starting that are looking at reducing treatment intensity or or less reducing treatment toxicities um and the impact that that might have on nutrition. Um, and really what we're starting to see is a need to focus on this obesity prevention um in our populations, particularly associated with high um survival in our children with ALL. Um, and they're surviving, but they're going on to uh have uh diagnoses of chronic disease um and metabolic syndrome, which increases their morbidity and decreases their quality of life as they go into adulthood. And we have this exciting emerging data around micronutrients and antioxidants, as Raquel um alluded to. And we are yet to figure out exactly what that means, um but this is definitely a space to watch. Next slide please. And finally, here's some things to consider when you are planning your research uh or your nutrition interventions, where you want to collect data. So um we do appreciate that undernutrition is still a a problem in our children with ALL. And we do have dietary interventions like food fortifications, supplements, um intral and parental nutrition to try and tackle that. Um, whether or not there is a space to try and uh be innovative in the different formulas that we have um and and sort of collaborate with uh our big um providers of uh nutrition support, um whether or not we can sort of change the micronutrient profiles, change that dietary fiber to modulate the gut bacteria, um other macronutrients like protein or antioxidants um and omega threes. So this, this could be a very exciting space in terms of collaboration with industry. Um, this uh looking at whether or not we can look at uh functional foods uh that really hone in on specific micronutrients um as supplementation interventions um and understand what that optimal micronutrient status is for children as they go through their treatment continuum um and understand what excess and um deficiencies really means um from a long-term health point of view as well. We really need to start thinking about diet and activity with this loss of function that we see in our children to prevent um that frailty phenotype that we start to see as they go into survivorship. So intervening with diet and activity interventions early is important. Um, and continuing that in a different intensities across the treatment continuum is also very important. And then looking at these safety and efficacy trials of pre and probiotics and how that impacts clinical outcomes, uh our quality of life in our patients and treatment complicate complications as well. And a lot of these allude to a multidisciplinary approach where nutrition professionals are at the table um with a lot of these decisions with regards to a child's um progression through treatment um and how we can optimize their nutrition as we go forth. So a lot of talking, um thank you very much for listening. Um, and Raquel and I are very grateful for the team that we worked with on this on this paper. Um, and yeah, thank you for having us uh talk to you tonight as well. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Amy. That was excellent. Um, yeah, and the way you presented it's like so understanding and what's going on in our field. Is there any questions from the audience? Yes, please go. Can you, can you talk? Yeah, please ask.
Yeah, yeah, I am Pablo Velasco, I'm a pediatrician who works with le- leukemia pediatric patients in Barcelona. Spain, thank you very much for this comprehensive presentation. Um, I have uh two questions. Uh, one is when you um uh when you recommended a supplement with vitamin D or other and nutrients, uh when uh do you decide to stop this recommendation? After finishing the treatment or depending on levels of vitamin D? You said that you are not giving them the supplementation uh because of the level, so I assume that you will stop it with different indicators. And the second is, um, have you got any restriction about bacterial uh diet for neutropenic patients? Because sometimes that impairs also the the diet that we want to to recommend. Thank you.
Um, Amy, do you want me to start with the first one?
Yeah, I was just about to say, go for it, Raquel.
Yes, yeah, uh, thank you, Pablo, for uh for the questions. So um in terms of vitamin D supplementation, we must acknowledge that we uh we don't know from interventional studies what the optimal dosage is uh for patients, but um what we've seen from observational data is that eh for patients who are not eh who might not be deficient, eh a dosage of six hundred international units might be sufficient to reach optimal levels. Eh, this is different for eh for patients who are deficient and which you need to adapt the dosages according to how deficient they are. Eh, what we've seen again from observational data is that they need to be monitored. Uh, so vitamin D status should be monitored. Uh, so if we think in terms of the half-life of vitamin D, eh that kind of ranges between fifteen days and thirty or forty days. Eh, so we tend to recommend about three months of monitoring. Eh, but again, this is an estimation.
Thank you.
Um, I suppose uh reflecting on your next question, um the the role of a a sort of low microbial diet or neutropenic diet is is has been an area of a lot of uh interest. And I think um one of the things that probably as nutrition professionals we should uh tend to focus more on um is uh instead of restricting foods down to a very small list of acceptable foods, um for, you know, giving parents confidence in their ability not to poison their children because they've not, maybe not done it thus far. Um, in terms of food hygiene practices at home, um really endorsing eh food hygiene practices uh along with, you know, appropriate things like washing food and and making sure that you're making good food choices with regards to uh how long that food's been out for, um or or you know where that food has been sourced from. I think working with families around what's normally eaten at home and and really strengthening their confidence and their ability to use those foods at home um and highlighting any practices that might need to be monitored, say things like, you know, with rice, et cetera, you know, good, good practices around rice and and reheating um rather than just restricting foods down to to a list of low microbial law because that really just wipes out all our fruits and veggies um which we want our children to eat. I keep telling my patients, fruits and veggies are important, don't forget them. Um, it's just how we, how we clean and prepare and cook and then reheat them. I think that's a better focus to try and improve diet quality.
Hey, totally agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pablo.
Sure, ma'am. Any um, any other questions from the audience? Um, I just wanted to ask, um, I don't know, in your own practice, the trend for obesity is increasing since you started. Um, because in, well, I work in South Africa, we didn't really have a problem with with obesity. But the past two years, like, you're gonna really see that I'm struggling. And it feels to me that moment you're calling the the family and the patient and start talking about cutting down some of some of some of the food next month, I come and my way more. So obviously, I'm doing something, there's something wrong. Um, it's just what I've thought of. Um, did you experience the same or was it always like a problem?
Uh, um, I mean, and I can only speak to New Zealand. Um, and overweight and obesity in our young, in our children, healthy population is pretty significant. Um, we see a lot of uh differences across ethnicities in New Zealand in terms of um prevalence of of overweight and obesity in our, in our young children. Um, I think unfortunately in in these children, I we often uh clinically prioritize our really acutely unwell children, our malnourished children, because that's where our staffing attention needs to go to. Um, and it is possible that we don't spend enough time with our children that are presenting with overweight and obesity at diagnosis um to try and um promote the 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 healthy eating behaviors and the and the healthy food choices through treatment. Um, we pass, I I know on reflection, we possibly get to these children too late uh when when we've sort of got feeding and eating practices instilled in the family as they go through treatment, um and they're a lot harder to change then. Um, that is an area that I would like to address in in my research. Um, because these children still lose function, they still experience complications. Um, and they experience a lot of morbidity as they go into survivorship as well. So I don't think you're doing anything wrong, Judy. This is really hard.
Um, this is mirroring in the UK as well. Um, the resources are for undernutrition. Uh, there is no resources for overnutrition eh eh obesity. And and one of the things that we can see that is a, I think it's almost a tradition uh from, okay, if you eat, eat whatever you want. Eh, if it's energy eh dense, that's great. Are you, at least you're having those calories regardless of your nutritional status. Obviously, that approach is no longer uh optimal for for this group. Eh, so there is really a combination of a tradition plus lack of resources um from the staffing levels.
Hmm, and potentially a bit of an allowance for more weight loss in these children or yeah, um, and which is ends up being mainly muscle. You know, yeah, the loss of function is very significant.
Yeah.
I think our guidelines, when we, when we get these guidelines done, we really do need to address the obesity prevention because I think it's a really challenging area of practice for us.
Hmm, particularly because it also increases treatment complications and clinical outcome of these, of these patients, the quality of life as well, short term and long term. Yeah, and it was just scary for me, but we like at the end of um of treatment before maintenance and suddenly you realize this patient actually picked up weight. And when you pull him in again, we are by the ones that actually eat anything. And by God's advice, I just have eating, but it seems like mom think you need to pick up weight and you need to be on supplements that she gets somewhere, not from me. But yeah, so I think the 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 mazes need to be out there from healthy and not like, like you say, in the calories.
Hmm.
But is there any other questions from anybody? I just want to thank you, both of you again for excellent article, number one. Um, and number two for the excellent presentation and um the way you did it and we are